Good morning, everybody. It's Monday, July 25, 2016, and I come on part of County Commissioner's Court order. Today we have Chief Dave Johnson who will do our indication for us because we can't find Richard at the time right now. So he's gonna come up and go and stand with me standing in the first block.
Judge, if I'll be done before you today, we can make some questions. We'll be here. We just ask that everything we do will be to glorify you and to further your work here on this earth there, God. We just ask that you humble us and let's make decisions according to your will. We just ask for, thank you for the first responders. We just ask that you be with the families of those that have lost their life there, God, and we just give you all the glory and praise. Yes, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Judge, I'd like to say one thing that target Paul was put in for a nominated for the Star of Texas Award. He sent a letter saying that he did receive the Star of Texas Award. He lost his life back on May 30th of 2014. So on September 12th, 2016, at 2:30, the big ceremony in Austin to award him the Star of Texas Award.
That is excellent. Thank you. That's wonderful. Before we get started, I just wanted to let y'all know I got a letter from the United States Department of Interior thanking Chief Lake specifically and Sheriff Thompson, Thomas, for the work at the Centennial Firework Event at Lakeview. Fifty-seven thousand people attended. And they wanted to thank you guys for being always professional and knowing what you were doing and getting all the work done and keeping the public safe. So thank you very much. I'll send you a copy of this, okay? I'll have Shannon scan and email it to you, okay? Thanks, guys. Okay. Number one, recognition of minutes from the July 11, 2016, by County Commissioner's Court meeting. Number two, vouchers. Consider an act upon the approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the county authorities office for the period of July 6, 2016 through July 20, 2016. Check numbers 169672 through 169913 and wire transfers 5754 through 755 in an amount of $2,988,232.
A note we approved the vouchers as presented.
Second for discussion. Couple of questions. Page 1 of 30. Check number 169683. Plains builders, roughly 88,000. Barrow Grounds, the Cody Arena. Mike, is this part of the completion for the projects?
Yes. I know there's a second page, I think, question on the project. Now I'm completing that project in this week.
Okay. Second question is page 7 of 30. Check number 169751. Our Texas, roughly 136,000. This is for the sheriff's admin space, I assume. How close are we? If you could go out there and take a look, Mike, at the project.
We laid it all to the demolition. That's all you'll see out there right now. We are probably within, hopefully, our last three or four weeks of 100% construction documents to be bringing to the commissioners to seek permission to go out and bid, hopefully somewhere in the end of August.
And one final question. Page 18 of 30. Check number 169882. SolarWinds IT, SolarWinds Help Desk, roughly 3,500. What is this off for? What is this for, Chief?
This is licensing for help desk software for the IT department.
Okay. Okay. I have a motion in a second. One, three, insurance report to recognize the insurance company for. Is there anything substantial?
Nothing in the role.
Okay. One recognized. Number four, treasures report to recognize treasures report and jointly and also report the warrant. We're doing very well. Always going well. If you'll turn to page six in your quarterly investment report. Just kind of want to give you just a glance through that and show you where our totals are and the accounts we have there. And then on page seven is Texas 4 Prime. If you go to page eight, this morning we have, well, not this morning, but the end of June 30th, we had $28,786,734.78, which is a little bit above where we were this time of year last year. But that really has to do with your spending. That's what we do, too. So we're right on target and doing quite well. Then I also provided all the where our totals were as far as what we urge in our daily rate. If you go to page 25, we still have the two seaters. We're earning 65 basis points. That will mature March 30th of 2017. And in the 2 million, earning 55 basis points. That will mature September 29th of 2016. And then the other change that we've had recently, if you'll notice on your treasures report on the last page, we have been collateralized at 40 million and they have reduced our collateral to 35 million. And, you know, they're the ones paying us 70 basis points on our general fund. So I tried to keep that behind us. So, which it also works. It's just lowering as much as I can keep in there. All is well. This morning, Texas Pool is earning 37 basis points. Texas Texas 4 Prime is at 56 and Texas Classic 64. This morning's total cash general is $27,852,716.66.
Lee, how's the account doing with Emerald National that you had transferred some? I remember correctly timing of the last time. Based on some of the basis points, they were going to give us a better rate?
Right. And it's our general fund and it's still at 70 basis points. And so generally, I mean, I keep it as high as I can. This morning, our total funds at the Emerald National Bank is 31.1 million. That's everybody's accounts, not just general. And we are collateralized at a little over 35. So I keep the general fund as high as I can, but I also have to work with the other funds that we have there as well. So like, I just moved a billion last Friday because we just launched payroll and those funds have gone out. So I moved in more funds. So it's just keeping it as high as I can.
I'm thankful Leanne for the job that she's doing with her body area. Stand on top of things and certainly appreciate how you take care of us. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks.
Judge, if I may, I want to go back to three course.
On the insurance?
Insurance. As far as the inmate that is taxing the county as far as paying from 35, so 35,000.
Well, I think so far we've spent over 200,000 on this visitor.
We didn't hear that. I think that actually.
Okay. We're paying one today of 11,000 on the vouchers.
That is not on the insurance front though.
It may. It's not on our insurance.
It may expenses come right through our insurance. That's what insurance is.
Yeah, he's on his own unfortunate with more payments bills. Okay. When we find out regulation about outdoor burning, to consider an act upon 15 or restricting outdoor work in an area of Potter County, pursuant to Local Government Code, Section 352,4081, for a period not to exceed 90 days. Richard. I'm sure you have information for us as well on the index.
We have seen quite a spike in fire activity this last month. Last week, I started looking at our ground index kind of on a daily level and we started off Tuesday in 462, we're at 480 now. So it's a trending upward. And doing that, I also looked at our ERCs, the Energy Release Components. It's basically fuel modeling for this area and it is really starting to spike up. So we have seen the fuels dry out. For Potter County, it is kind of uncharacteristic to have a summer fire season. Generally, it's our wetter time of the year and we're seeing quite a bit of fire activity right now that is out of character for what we want to deal with. Just for the month of July, we've had 23 wildland fires, rebuilding fires and nine other types of fires, which the building fires and the other fires are generally what we normally see. The wildland fires have increased exponentially. That's also counting the 4th of July holiday when we saw 12 fires within an eight hour period. So we're running pretty steady. Last night, we had one that started in the middle of the night. Generally, the humidity is higher and by the time the fires have less activity, the fire last night was moving pretty well, heavy fuel. So we're at the point that we need to, we need to regulate the outdoor burning as much as we can. We requested in the wording of the burn ban that people still be allowed to dispose household trash and have cooking or warming fires as long as you're in a metal container with a screen over it. And I think that's acceptable under what we're doing here to allow people to still take care of their household trash and at the same time stop the pit fires and the brush pile fires that we have there getting someone out of the ham, especially with winds and the driving system we're seeing.
I love the forecast that we're seeing. It's true because it looks like maybe rain all this week.
They're telling us that just about every day and I pulled some of the fire weather forecasts for the next 20, 30 day period. And right now, over Potter County, it's like a bullseye. We're in very high fire danger and the whole pain is falling into the high fire danger area. My fear is that we can't control other danger. My fear is that we have thunderstorms moving through the area that will probably more than likely start more fires. Hopefully, we get some moisture in, we get enough that we can saturate the fuels and be able to come out of burn ban. I think for right now, we need to implement it and hope we can change it.
Where was the fire last night?
It was off of Blue Mountain. It sparked by an electrical line out in the field, but it was pretty, it was burned pretty good, pretty heavy fuel. So it was moving towards.
Any structure damage?
No structure damage. It was moving towards, and that's one of the things that we, you know, as these fires start picking up speed, start moving, we're seeing them moving towards residential areas. Makes it pretty, pretty important that we, you know, do what we can to keep that happening.
Make a motion if we can.
On the residence, people combined with the regulation.
Yeah. The last several times we've gone under a burn ban, we've had very little problems. And even without a burn ban, we've seen more people trying to, trying to do it safer. But at the same time, last Saturday, not this last Saturday, but a week ago, we had four control burns called in on Saturday and I went out and checked off four of them and two of them were big brush piles and they're just out in the middle of their open pasture with, you know, people not really watching them that much and everything else. So when we get that and we get the high winds that we've been seeing lately, the fire danger increases tremendously and that's what we're trying to control here. Second question.
Okay. I have a motion in a second on paper, Richard, right hand. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Okay. Number six, CASA and the Bridge for potential funding to consider an act upon a proposal from or upon a special advocates. Also known as CASA and the Bridge for potential funding pursuant to Texas Transportation Code, Section 52 or 42 regarding funding availability for child safety and child abuse prevention and intervention programs such as those administered by CASA and the Bridge through collection of $1.50 per vehicle and add-on fee to existing vehicle registration fee collected by Potter County, Texas.
Is number 10 part of this? Is item number 10 part of this?
Yeah, I think so. So Laura, you want to come up and tell the court or anybody that's supposed to come with you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I brought my chichi because that's a mouthful. So as you said, this is a code and tax, but also we can break this down for us and it can be used for school cross-the-board programs. And if that's not being utilized, then it can go to programs like CASA, the Bridge, that impacts child safety. And so that is what we're proposing today. And we have done some research and the school cross-the-board programs are being funded through the city. I made some contacts with the city to come and get some information about that. And so what we're asking today is that that money could be added to vehicle registrations. And then there is a 10% that will be held back for the county for administrative cost. And then the other part would be split between CASA and the Bridge. And these would help to fund our programs and the services that we're doing at our community and the kids that we're serving. I think we both really feel like, you know, child abuse in the blacks is a community problem. And so this is one way that the community can help all of this funding stays here locally and does not go to Austin, stays within the county, stays within these programs. And so that's what we're proposing. You can answer any questions.
We've got a tremendous surge of volunteers. It's something I was looking at from last year to this year. I think from the first 20 years, we were initiated four and then age six in 2014 and in one year, we've got a hundred volunteers.
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, that's only about 50% of kids that are actually here. And so for us to be able to serve all of the kids that enter care as far as cost is concerned, we would need to increase, we would need to double the amount of volunteers to serve all of the kids that are coming to care. Potter County still has twice the rate of abuse in the left than the state. So we still have a lot of work to do within our community.
Do you have the estimate in terms of annual revenue? So a dollar, a dollar fifty for the sake of discussion and the number of motor vehicle registrations? What are we looking at? Financial impact per year?
There's 105,000 vehicle registrations in Potter County, which would come out to about 150,000 in revenue to be split between the agencies as well as probably about $10,000 to $15,000 in revenue for the county to pay for those administrative costs.
Can you approach Randall County?
Tomorrow morning. Yes, sir.
I think that's part of the reason our figures are so high because they're skewed because everybody comes here to the hospital and our services are all here in Potter County. So we hope, I would hope anyway, that the other counties will share some of this burden. So if we do this, I hope they will to.
Share.
So much need that we need to continue.
Sherry, a quick question as it relates to the fee. How would this impact your daily operations?
We just explain why it's on there. I would come out on the registration form, they get them out. And we just be glad to, I would have to add something in our bookkeeping to give them money.
To keep her some kind of gate with Lou and Carrie, you know, just see how she wants us to settle that.
So he wouldn't send out the question, the form of the log or flyer or something in the beginning of the year to indicate by that figure's whether.
All those are mailed from the state, so I don't know when you set it up by the state. And in answer to, I'm sure Church's question, but number 10 is going to be part of this because we have to add that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. But that's just what we do every year is the road bridge fees, $10, so it would be in conjunction with that, sorry.
Yes, we'll have to add that.
I'm just interested to get our percent. No, no question, the programs are warranted and so I get that. I'm just interested in the fees and what our residents feel like in terms of fees and pricing. And so this is, you know, kind of self-imposing a donation, if you will. So we have to be really intentional and there's not a lot of counties across the state that do that. There's really a handful that vary from 50 cents all the way up to a dollar fifty in the max. So I'm just trying to be sensitive to what, what our residents are saying when they go pay for their motor vehicle registration. If this keeps going up and, yeah, okay. Okay, all right. And Judge, I don't know if there's been any previous discussion in terms of the fee that you're in particularly supporting, whether it is 50, 75, a dollar, or are we saying we're going straight to the dollar fifty? I'd like to see a balance in the middle, especially if you're going to Randall County to ask for comparable funding so that we can certainly, you know, be mindful of the initiative, but not go to the max imposition of fees for those that are going to impact on a daily basis. That'd be my recommendation.
What did we talk about? The dollar fifty?
I mean, it's a maximum, but you have the option to be in the range. Can you make a sense to that if you can?
So I would have to thank your program, which says, I probably be in the middle of the rankings, but I understand that Potter County is just the highest rate as far as the problems that you serve. But the numbers again are skewed because everyone comes to Potter County. Is that being addressed in those counties as well to articulate that?
I'm trying to make sure I understand your question. So we would use that, we would use those spendings on our, the child safety fee. We would use that to promote our, to conduct our prevention and education programs so to offer safety education programs to children, to get out more to the community about what to do, how to report, how to respond to that. So it's really a prevention initiative because many times people go through and they don't, they don't know how to talk to a child when they're in the midst of abuse. So actually for ours, for child abuse, what they anticipate is only 10% of the cases are actually reported. So there's actually way more unreported. So the more awareness that we do, the more likely actually those numbers will increase. That doesn't mean we're doing a worse job. That just means that we're addressing more of those issues. And so even with those who are, I know personally within our community and I've talked to them about things, they still don't understand the importance of listening to that child and that first response, how important that is. So our community education programs are very much focused on how do you respond when a child tells you about that or what signs do you look for so you know when to report?
Are there counties that are involved as far as your services?
We provide services to 26 counties in the Texas Panhandle.
Have they involved in this at all?
We, you guys are our first people to come to and we do get funding from like United Ways in those areas and things like that. So we do receive support from them and Potter and Randall County have traditionally, we've not come to you guys for any type of monetary support through your counties.
Are you going to these other 26 counties?
Depends on your answer. That's part of the long-term plan, but we feel that Potter and Randall County are the leaders in the top 26 here in the Panhandle and that you were the obvious first choice due to the population of Potter County. And we are on the agenda tomorrow in Randall County. I believe after we get answers from this court and the Randall County Commissioners' Court, that we'll be in a better position to approach those other smaller counties who are going to, their first question is going to be, what are Potter and Randall County doing?
Scott, this is a question that actually was brought up a couple of years ago and I had this question for Dave in particular and he indicated the county had decided some time ago not to move in this direction. From a historical perspective, is there any reason that you can tell me, you know, maybe why? But I remember a board member actually reaching out in reference to this fee, speaking with Dave and said, we just decided not to go in that direction. I don't know if you have any history.
I don't have any personal recollection of that. Obviously, it's a policy choice.
Sure.
So your question is that we decided the county not to go in that direction?
According to Dave, now this has been some time, several years ago, but this fee and how I learned of this fee is from an actual board member from the bridge at the time saying, do you realize the county can impose this fee? And so in diligence, you know, certainly I was supposed to speak to our legal counsel and at the time was told, we have just decided historically not to move in that direction to impose fees. So I just didn't know if there was any history of the why and certainly in retrospect because where that question's coming.
This first became a project for, I'm Amy Rhodes, I work in the Randall County DA's office, I'm an assistant DA there, I've been there for 20 years. For most of that time, I have worked on child abuse, physical abuse, sexual abuse and child in the love cases. I also am a board member at the Bridge. And about 2011, this became an issue that the board discussed to approach our Commissioners' Courts to talk about that fee. We felt like the timing wasn't right at that time. We felt like that Potter and Randall financially needed to recover more from the fallout from 2008, 2009. I think everyone was struggling at that point. I know particularly in Randall County, the Commissioners felt like outside of this issue, but they didn't want to impose higher taxes, they wanted to be very fiscally responsible. And so we decided to shelve it at that point. We just didn't think the timing was right. Because I'm a taxpayer, I don't want to pay more taxes or fees than I have to. And I want those who have the responsibility and the fiduciary duty of watching over that money to spend it as wisely as possible. So we shelved it at that point, hoping for a better day, a better economy. And I think that we're getting there in Amarillo. I think we are doing a lot better than we were in 2009, 2010, 2011. And as a taxpayer, I can tell you that if you told me what this fee was for and that it stays local, I think that's key. This money isn't going to Austin. You all or the Commissioners or if you're not on it in the future, would have the responsibility to give this money to the programs that you deem best fit the mission. And it doesn't have to be just CASA or just the Bridge. We have a lot of nonprofit agencies that provide great services to kids in Potter and Randall County. So I guess I'm advertising against who I'm here to help represent. But it's, I feel as a taxpayer, as a payer, I would be okay with that because I would feel like it's the right thing to do. And it's something very small I can do as a taxpayer to give a handout to a kid who needs something.
Yeah, I definitely think that's a really good point and it really kind of echoes the fact of where my particularly feeling is in the middle, only because from a visionary perspective, if Randall's coming to the table and we're kind of collectively representing the city and also give the Commissioners Court some room because this is a precedence. So should there be another nonprofit that come to the table that provides comparable services, we need to have some of those dollars kind of available to even have the discussion with them. If we start right at the max capacity, we essentially lock everyone else out. I think as a court, to keep me honest here, but we can review this from year to year in terms of the fee. So maybe this time next year, should we proceed, I think it would be helpful for us, me in particular, to understand how those dollars are being used to give us some insight into that. I know because I'm very familiar with your programs, but just, just to give us something tangible and give other nonprofits room to kind of come to the table now. and give other nonprofits room to kind of come to the table and ask for some of those dollars, certainly. Would be what I'm advocating for.
One thing to understand is that the money net of the administrative costs retained by the county is actually paid to the city and specifically allocated to the school crossing guard programs unless those are already fully funded. Then the city has the option to allocate these funds to these programs. So we're a little bit of a chicken and egg situation because I don't know what.
The 10% should go to the city?
Yes. And I don't know what discussions are going to have with the city to do that.
I can tell you, I, I have reached out to Mick McCamie and Brian Williams. And I passed on, um, kind of this cone and all of the legal stuff like that. And I've also reached out to the Emerald City Manager. Um, so I'm just kind of waiting to hear back from them, if they are aware of this project to kind of, um, what we're trying to do. We do know that the city does pay for those crossing guards, so that's already funded. Um, but we are, we are working on kind of getting an answer from them.
But it never came back to us.
Clear the sort of a difficult position to decide whether to impose this fee and not knowing for certain how the city is ultimately going to use it. I don't know what our timing is here, but perhaps the court could consider.
So we can burn out these with the city?
Yeah, or if it's subject to confirmation of what the city might have run up to.
Yeah, I would hate to impose that and then the city get it. That's not cool.
Well, sure, the city would be good stewardship.
All this paper, the funds are going to be used.
But the 10% has earmarked what it can be used for, but that's with the city. They can't just say, well, they're going to put it in on the streets or whatever.
Well, no, it has to go to child welfare safety, uh, crossfire programs. But it's 10%, it's really 90% of the money is paid to the city and we.
The 10% is for the administration fee.
For the county.
And then the 90% goes to, if the city can use it for crossing bars, but we've already confirmed that that's fully funded through the city budget. If they choose to, then they can use that first for that, and then the remainder goes to the agencies.
I misunderstood. I thought you said the 10% administrative fees went to the city.
No, you guys have one. You guys have one for administering it.
Goes to the city for them to.
That's our, we then only pay, we need to be very clear about what their expectation is because if the 90% goes there and there's a new incoming revenue, if I'm on that council, I may look at that and say, well, there's new dollars, so maybe we can use those school crossing dollars to do something else. And our intent, not really get all the way through. So I think there needs to be either an interlocal agreement or some type of on paper conversation. And that will be a pass through and indeed the agencies will get the dollars. I would hate for us to go all the way through this and not be very diligent about the language. Um, and, and the end goal will not be accomplished, especially since we're the first one. We're setting a precedence, you'll be going to other counties. I mean, I think it would, it would definitely warrant a conversation before we take action.
We don't have a conversation right now with the DA. And where are the timing constraints?
I believe that August 23rd is the deadline to let them know that these funds are going to be, or is going to be added. Um, I'm not sure when the city has their next. I know in Randall County, we are on the next city council to get that kind of approval, unless you're from them. Um, so I'm not sure when the city will.
Every Tuesday, okay, every Tuesday. So that may just be a matter of a conversation and representative going to the city, getting an interlocal agreement that it will indeed get passed through to the agencies. I think something as, as little as that could make sure that the end goal really does get accomplished.
Oh Laura, I, I appreciate you coming to talk to me about it. You, you gave me some stats that were staggering.
Yes.
If you could share some of those with the, with the audience, on, on, on kids age out and what happens to them?
Absolutely.
And just tell them a little bit about what you told me.
As far as the kids that works, you know, foster care was never meant to be a long-term solution. It just wasn't. It was meant to come in, intervene, help the parents, and then the children being around them. But unfortunately, we have hundreds, thousands of kids and they've been PMC, which is permanent managing conservatorship. Um, and the term aging out means that at 18, they can age out of the foster care system. And I think what's important to know is that, um, kids that age out of the foster care system, 60% of those end up homeless within the first week because they have no support. Uh, they have nobody there to, um, help them know that they need to finish high school, that they have college tuition paid for them. Only 2% of them actually use the free college tuition the state provides to them. Um, human trafficking is also a big topic right now. And we learned that 68% of kids that are involved in human trafficking are foster care kids. So, and also 66% of people that are in prison were once in the foster care system. So our philosophy is that if we can intervene now, fast and hard, that these kids, um, provide them with one caring adult, and that they can be that much more successful and will be less of a burden on our system as a whole later. We can pay a small amount now as a community, or we can pay $200,000, um, you know, for one insurance type, um, somebody who quite possibly could have been in, uh, foster care. And so we're working very diligently with our volunteers to make sure that these kids have a solid base, that they have somebody that is supporting them and making sure that their identity hasn't been stolen before they leave care. And that they have a savings account, that they know where they're going at Christmas time, they know where they're going at Thanksgiving, and that they're not seeing there's someone to be missing there. And these are things that, you know, we grew up having a parent that did that for us, and these kids just don't. And there are hundreds of them. And if you read the news and want, you know, read the paper, you will know that Texas is in a foster care crisis right now. We have children sleeping in the CDC offices. And there's just, there's a lot to be done. All of the top administration with, uh, that's in the department has changed. And so now we have a system that is in reform and changing, but there are thousands of kids that are waiting. And our programs have been pretty steady in our model and what we do. And we're going to continue to do that. You know, we, we can find help in other ways as well, and that's extremely important.
I tell you, it's, it's a vicious circle because, you know, you, you see them, we don't see them. Most people don't see them, they don't know it, they don't know what's going on. But I see it every Monday at the jail. Sheriff, uh, David knows what I'm talking about. I deal with homeless people every Monday and every Tuesday. So they were once children and so now they're adults. And so they're in the same cycle. So we have to do something to break that cycle. We have to, so.
Could Judge, would it be appropriate to pass this item until we can confirm with the city and even get a draft interlocal agreement in terms of the deadline of August? And we certainly don't want to miss the deadline if there's a consensus, but that 90% goes there. I just think we have to be very cautious about how that dollar should pass through.
What would happen if this was not to pass?
Well, we will just continue on as we have been. I mean, getting creative in our funding. I mean, there's 400 nonprofits in Amarillo, so you can imagine that all of those agencies are, are, are fine for that, those funds. And so we just, we just keep working. We don't have a choice.
It's the same way with COSAs and with, uh, our state organizations. We receive funding from them, but there's more children's advocacy centers popping up every day. There's more COSAs. So those state funding, of course, fund the new programs as well, so that gets less and less and less. We have to find that. And, and the bridge has lost a major, is losing a major funding source this year because of the settlement for the store. So, and we are trying to look for ways to find that new funding.
So what is that target date at August 23rd?
23rd. Y'all meet before then? 27th, okay.
Judge, I will say that, that is, when I was in investigations, I mean, we use the bridge. I mean, it's definitely an asset for the law enforcement part of COSA too. I mean, you know, you, you're dealing with these kids all the time. We don't have access to kids, so we take it to them. They're excellent job. So anything we can do to help them is, is a whole lot, whole lot better. If not, it comes back on us too, as far as law enforcement, sheriff's office, or the city police. So anything we can do, a dollar would hurt.
Related to Dave, it's, uh, a 41-year survivor of law enforcement. Uh, a lot of, a lot of kids went through, uh, through your program. And it's, it's a very important program. We, we need to continue it and, uh, I believe we, if you want to pass this now, that'd be fine. But, uh, come back and, uh, throw us out with your protest.
We meet on the 8th and the 22nd.
It'd be fair to tell the Randall County Commissioners that you're all very enthusiastic.
Yes.
I would imagine though they would have a similar question as, as the dollars pass through the, through the city. So I would, I would imagine. So if, if they're going to have the conversation, they have both counties and the city have the same opinion.
So we'll leave this on two weeks.
So we, uh, approve some level of funding pursuant to the city. Guarantee where the money will go, then it will, will go to these organizations.
I don't think it would be inappropriate to approve something, uh, such to.
Say something in hand.
Does it go to Randall?
I don't care.
Like, it doesn't, I don't, I don't. I think it's presumptuous to pass it, in my opinion, without knowing where 90% of the dollars can indeed get to.
Well, we wouldn't give it unless, we wouldn't institute it unless they agreed. I, I don't think the city's going to do a wrong, but I just don't think that's going to happen.
Okay. And will you, uh, be happy to help? Although I would have a harder time presenting this. But I'll be happy to, uh, resource it. Especially in a local.
And is it acceptable to you, our, our KAN City Attorney and the Attorney in office, that is our leader in the commission?
Sure.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number seven, a local government corporation. We're about that date a long ago.
Um, the LGC met on July 20th and Commissioner Church was there. Uh, really the big part of the agenda was touring the three big projects. So we got to get on the ground, if you will, to the Excel project, the parking garage, uh, and the hotel. We looked at a conference room and they also took us to a location where there were two staged hotel rooms. That's available for public viewing, um, if anybody would like to see that. I may go my next time while there, just because I think it would be great for the public to be able to see that. There are stage rooms built that you can walk through and kind of see what this will look like. Uh, so that was really the, the cracks that led me to the walkthrough. Um, a little bit on the updates. Uh, what we're expecting from the LGC is a term schedule on the, um, the property, the retail space, space property for the parking garage, so that will be coming soon. They're also looking at an RFP for the parking equipment. So this will be the technology kind of behind the scenes of, uh, counting and, and whatever technology they're going to use, there's going to be an RFP. Been a lot of discussion about how to manage that, so it's not a bottleneck, getting in or out of it. I reminded, uh, the LGC that our property is catty-cornered to the retail space. And I see the district court's parking lot and, uh, the sheriff's admin space very, very close. That is free parking. And so their pro forma is built on the revenue from the parking garage to pay off this debt. Um, they shared that the city is now starting to have discussions as it relates to paying parking. Um, from my perspective, I, I shared certainly to make the court aware that our taxpayers built our parking lot, so I can't imagine, uh, we would be charging taxpayers down the road for something they built. But I, you know, I just shared that from my perspective, just so, so you know, that conversation may be coming. Um, the, uh, they are looking at issuing a RFP, so this Thursday, for the demolition of the Coke building. That will happen in several phases and roughly $515,000 is the dollar amount budgeted for that. I think that's all the updates. Commissioner Church, do you want to add anything in terms of the tour that I don't get kind of?
No, I, I attended as a member of the tiers board and, uh, it, uh, it's very interesting. I think everyone in the city ought to be excited about these projects. It's, uh, I, I think it's exciting to drive down town and see all the activity. It was a good experience, a good, uh, a good journey.
Number eight, neighborhood planning, interlocal agreement. Do you consider an active line of all the agreements between City of Amarillo, Potter County, where each entity will be budgeted $75,000 for the budget for 2016, 2017, for community development and specific neighborhoods in Amarillo? I got a lot from the city in the mail this weekend. It's ready to go, signed, sealed, and delivered, basically, so. I guess we just need to work on that.
Well, to provide a little background, um, to the Commissioners Court, what this agreement is. So this is the $75,000 that we provided budget, uh, almost last year now, budget time. And we went to the city and said, we really need to have a concerted effort on areas of our county that just need a little more help. So we took the 75 grand to help spark the conversation. That has turned into the Neighborhood Initiative that you probably have heard quite a bit about for North Heights. Uh, the next location slotted is the Badiol, uh, San Jacinto 3rd and East Ridge 4th to get us started. So this is really putting some framework that we committed back to you, once we knew a little bit what this would look like. Um, the main thing that I wanted to highlight, and, and you have all seen the draft of this prior to today, for any edits prior to going to the city council. Uh, but the main thing that I wanted to highlight, uh, to the group is that we are not committed to this. Uh, hereby, we will absolutely revisit this in budget session. But it allows us to have this flexibility, us have an agreement on file clarity about how the dollars are going to be used. Any unused dollars will go into a restricted account that the city will maintain so that it indeed gets used for these purposes. Um, and then financial reports. And so we'll start to get into a rhythm where the city will come, um, assuming Michelle or a representative will come to address the court to help educate us of how these dollars are part of being used. But every time this committee meets and Judge Hannah and I sit on this committee, uh, we try to add an agenda item so that everyone is up to speed about the initiative and, uh, where we're at.
So do we, do we sign this mail? I know we haven't.
This is the current, this is our $75,000 we've already sent their way. That's this agreement.
That's for that for the last, for the last budget we did?
Yes, we sent $75,000.
I know we did, but I mean, I thought this was for the upcoming year.
Well, this is to put framework around the $75,000 we've already sent. And then to set the, the element, to set the element, uh, for this budget year, should we choose to use it. And, and we haven't actually sent the dollars yet. Once this agreement is signed, we will send them the dollars and they will come report to us.
We're looking at another $75,000 budget time?
I think so, is that right Judge?
I hope we did a good explanation of what it's being used for.
Yeah.
This doesn't tell us.
Uh, agree, agree. And that's why the financial reporting clause was in there. And there's a lot of room to improve this from year to year. This was really our attempt to get something on paper outside of, we sent you $75,000, come tell us how it's being used. Yes. All right, I make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Amarillo and Potter County, where each entity will budget $75,000. Um, the way it reads currently 2016 and 2017, carries out the right fiscal year on here? Or shouldn't it be? 1516. 1516 for community development and specific neighborhoods.
I need a second. Second. The motion in second? I don't favor it, do I, Anne? Oppose. For one.
All right, remember that, Laker Lane, in terms of, to consider an active line of proposals or improvements to Laker Lane, just want to check 253 of the Texas Department of Education.
I think conditions are right to issue public notice of state or the, you know, the new board. And Ms. Towns worked on this for, parts of the time, and then for the next year.
Yeah, um, I would like to talk this off a little bit. You keep this one, but the only one I have not talked to personally is, uh, along the S's. Is the Mr. Nama, I have to look at the reading, but we've talked to him, he was 20 years. Uh, we ended up with another one that we had to catch up there, missing a moment. But the main question I have is on the colors, they're numbered in A, I believe. But there's people that have lots, you know, have things on the lots that they'll be affected by. If they don't put, they, I don't know that they're listed on the color, but we're going to need more than that. So what I was wondering is, they can't get on the lots once it's finished, and if they don't have one, you know, it's going to be too deep. if they can't get on the lots once it's done, and if they don't have one, you know, it's gonna be, to be, from what we were told, so would they be able to add that to the estimate, you know, anything that's necessary when they get started?
Sebastian, how do you, and hold up additional culverts now? Do you have a piece of progress?
The way I have told you, right? Beforehand, she asked beforehand, so I would say you could add it in. But like on previous ones, one is out in Bishop branches, and they didn't have one, they want one now, we may have to pay for it, so. Because they asked to add it into the original estimate.
See, that's why we're asking now, because somebody don't know that, that they have to, you know, have one added now. And so that's why I'm asking for them, because they asked.
That's a good question, that's the first time anybody's asked beforehand, they usually ask after the fact.
And then the property owner has to pay for it?
Yes. But now, she wants to add it in, but would we just add it to the cost in part of the budget?
Yeah, that's what we thought would be unfair, because they would have to pay for their own later, when you check, so yes, now this split costs, so.
So the figures we have will be...
We'll change it. We'll tell them, you know, the others that they have to, if that's the right profit, we may have to add, you know, the cost to be a little bit more than that. Because everybody's split.
So you just need to let us, Sebastian, do I have any more?
Well, we're not sure till, I mean, unless they want to come out, look, and I can show them, you know, the terms. They're not sure that for one part of our place, we have to have one, but the other one, we're not sure whether they're having or not. You know, but we told them, we did have to have it, we'll take it, but we don't, we don't want it.
Carrie, does this, um, price include a twenty percent increase or temporary, we went over budget this last time around, I want to make sure that...
This is an estimate, I'm not very good at it, contracting it out, but, yes, I would say...
We need to add to...
Twenty percent, just in case.
So, will, will you let Ms. Doe, will you give her a little background on what happened on the project that is now finishing?
Yes, we just went over a little bit. You get in a situation like the, the survey and stuff like that, we don't have to survey, right? But we surveyed Bishop branches, and got into a little extra cost, and then the clean sheet, and a few other culverts and stuff like that, I mean. But like I said, it's just an estimate, so.
Right, and it's what you put on all the papers.
The thing is, the estimate, we can't go, can't go over the estimate for what we tell you when you vote. We tell you you're gonna have to plan, we can't go over it, but we can cut it back if it's less expensive.
Oh.
Okay, isn't that right?
So good.
Yeah, we have to set the maximum, where you set it, where I...
If it's less than that, then you don't get, you don't get charged for the excess.
So we'll have to add a percentage on top of the dollars that you're seeing to help us, because what we noticed with that last project is we did go over budget, we can't ever go back to you as property owners and say, well, we were ten percent over what you voted on, we have to give you that max dollar. So when you go through these, um, proposed assessments, you might add in, did we decide, I know we said twenty percent, just kind of shooting from the head last discussion, do we?
Here's what I recommend.
Sure.
When it comes time to set out the ballots, after we have the public hearing, attached to that ballot should be a couple exhibits. One would be the maximum total assessment, and the maximum assessment per tract. And, uh, the other thing would be, exhibit states specifically what work is going to be done, so that everybody knows. Including culverts, to be known and aware of to be doing.
So, on this, um, estimate, you have no, there's not a contribution in?
Yes.
And thank you for being patient with us, because this is actually only our second one. Um, so we've learned a little bit with Bishop branches, so I, I can empathize with your frustration as you come to the core and really us not being able to guide you, so thank you for being patient with us as we learn this process with you.
Uh, I think I'll find it, is still, yeah, but most of the ones that are on here are yes, other than, you know, there's a few that are question mark, we don't know, and there's a couple that are, that, you know, we don't know what to do, so. But the majority is yes.
So, majority of the yeses, you're voting for me?
Yeah, you don't have...
I, I don't need it, but I'd love to.
How many, how many property owners up here total? You missed out, how many property owners total?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Okay.
We only have nine on this sheet, so I guess we're, or we don't have four numbers. Okay. Okay, so we need to wait to go ahead more information?
No, we can go ahead, I think, go ahead, call for a public hearing, if that's what we desire.
Uh, and if we can get the notices published by August tenth, we can schedule a private, September twelve. That should be good.
Do you need that in form of a motion to?
Yes.
Yes, I'd note that we, uh, go ahead and approve the, uh, holding of a public hearing in regards to record lacking improvements pursuant to Chapter two fifty-three of the Texas Transportation Code.
Second.
Okay, the motion in a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doe.
Number ten, Department of Labor, be able to consider an act upon the position of Kelly, year twenty seventeen, optional, please. This is a road bridge, paid at ten dollars, that never changes, hasn't changed in a hundred years, and it's just always on the agenda to do this, so. This is just something that's always, we just have to do.
I'm in agree.
I'm just gonna ask, should we pass this item until we confirm the child safety conversation? Because there's no losses road bridge.
Is there something, or should we wait?
Yes, there is, it's always the basis, you want it, you want it to like to vote. Well, I'd like to see the...
So you just want one option to cover all of them?
Right.
Okay, number eleven, vehicle transfers. To consider an act upon the transfer of vehicles between charities departments as follows. For expedition from auction to facilities, crown bay from auction to facilities, or escape from facilities to auction, and for E three fifty from facilities to auction.
Vicki?
This is just, um, consider an act upon, we had talked about in the last Commissioner's Court, about taking some of our auction items and letting facilities be able to utilize them until, uh, you know, that are actually in good condition for them to be able to, that they actually work. The other ones are not working, is that correct? So, do you have anything else you'd like?
We're not adding any to the fleet, thank you.
Okay, the motion?
Make a, oh, go ahead. I make a motion that we approve the vehicle transfers as...
Have a motion, second, all in favor, raise your hand. Oppose, number one, I agree. Uh, number twelve, surplus property auction, to consider an act upon, free being attached to surplus property items, and one of those will be resold at auction.
This is just a procedure that will consider act upon, for us to be forward in the online auction.
Vicki, one thing that, uh, Mr. Harder used to do is he would send an email out to the United Way Mister, to see if anybody needed any of these items, in turn, because this goes to all the nonprofit agencies in the city, uh, before they just kind of rotated off the hook, so it was just something small that we did as a county, so if you're at all interested, there's a local United Way that you could send in this.
Okay, I can get you that information. I know, I can give you that information, Matt Johnson, you're here, is that something that, is that procedures, do you know?
I haven't done that the past couple auctions.
Okay, all right, I'll certainly get you that information.
Maybe I remember, but I thought we had the option, if, whatever, if there's anything in mind.
That's what I thought, because, uh, we didn't sell some shares in the last one, and I gave it to, uh, Hattie.
Okay, that's fine, that's okay.
But I know, I'm just going up there.
Yeah, and that sounds appropriate. Yeah, that sounds appropriate, to let us through the auction, and then in case that we do not sell, we'll give it to, an opportunity for the agencies.
Can you, can you make the print look smaller, so we listen to you better?
It's fine, it's not gonna be small. Great, the motion.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the list of, um, surplus items to go to public auction. Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, so, thank you. I'm gonna skip number thirteen for now, uh, go to number fifteen, to consider not to go on following, blowout into a bridge, discharge of Alexander Hansen, Summer Moore, uh, B, Internet Technology, presentation of Roland Davis, transfer of Linda Bragden, the transfer of Chelsea Green. The motion.
With approval of the, uh, five items as proceeding.
Okay, have a motion in a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Two more, thank you very much. Jail report today is four hundred and ninety-two people in jail, four hundred and eighteen of those are males, seventy-four are female, and zero in children, eighty-four percent are villains, fourteen percent are usually minors, two percent are binge-borns and fugitives. Okay, so now we're gonna go back to number thirteen. Potter County versus Jericho Construction, to consider an act upon pending litigation, number one hundred thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine, dash B, in the one eighty-first District Court, Public Penitentiations. We only need executive session for this, correct?
Yes, this involves attorney-client.
Okay, so we will recess for a few minutes, and it is ten oh one.
I hope we do that, do it, I mean, uh, in Louisville, we asked you to just don't, we do have a, a young lady from South Houston State University that has been working, I'd be approved that, uh, helped with the count of JP Four, of all of the boxing man material, she's in a mall, of course, with his last, she's named Shayla Smith, and we're certainly proud to have her. Thank you.
Just to correct, we will announce the executive session, particular session number.
Okay. We're holding the executive session to confirm with counsel regarding the vote pending litigation pursuant to Section five thirty-one, dash under point zero seven, on the code, okay.
Page ten, seventeen, you have mentioned, I don't have insurance.
Uh, we'll probably just come back, we can not, we can go ahead and...
It doesn't work, I just didn't know.
Our bank, uh, in session from the, uh, from the executive session, there was no action taken.
At ten twenty-two.
At ten twenty-six, thank you so much, please. You're welcome. So, we have a motion, ready?
I move that we, uh, ask our county attorney to proceed with the legal action. It's adjournment, or, I was just gonna say, anyway, legal action, as we discussed, then we have... Second, your session.
Second.
The motion in a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much, and as we said right before we broke out, there was no insurance out of, that's correct, okay? And anything for next time, Angela, is there next time that you can pick up? Okay, good. Um, we've got me, obviously, we have third and fourth, correct, to me to do budget. Um, I have one probate, but I can just stop for five minutes, go do it. So, so the morning, I'll watch the program, and the afternoon, a whole day, I'll watch people all over the school, this is going for me. So what do y'all have?
Seven AM, um, morning.
No.
So are you suggesting just the morning time on the third?
Well, I could do part of the afternoon. I tried, so you say that at two, you can do it after two.
Morning, what time's your program?
It's at ten, then I have none one and two.
So if you wanna start at nine, you break for five minutes, and then we keep going till two, and then plan on the next day? Is that how it feels?
Not really.
It's nine AM?
Judge, can I be able to present my...
Yes.
Come on, and then on the fourth, what's my, did you wanna start at nine AM?
Yeah, it's all, fully.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can get a, um, have a big, big machine. Franky, uh, start with Franky.
Yeah, possible, maybe, it's just that...
My machine, or whatever.
We're gonna be here?
Yes.
The other item, I, just been running around my head, was that, uh, building on Sixth Street, I was having a minute at that. Someone come and ask if we're thinking of selling, have we done anything on that?
He's still calling, yeah, he's still asking.
We need to do something. Who's he, who's he calling?
He's calling me, he's calling Ted, and he's calling Carrie.
He's calling me, it's the same one?
Okay, it's the same one.
What are they calling?
They want that, do they want the different, is that the same one?
I want to look at it.
I thought you did mean to like, to look at...
We had venom on numerous occasions, uh, and then I was directed to stop meeting them out there. So I guess they're ready to purchase them. This is different.
Yeah.
Different?
Yeah.
No, that, no, this was the same guy, I think, the same guy that was in court the last time, that came? I believe he...
He was in court, yeah.
Okay.
What, what he was, what he was seeking was listing it.
Oh, yeah.
And he was behaving as though he already had it, he's in agreement, and that has never been passed before. Meanwhile, it's starting to operate, that building is sold.
Yeah, my understanding is, he also, at least formally, they know, he wanted to put in five, the eight monitors in that, or stored in that.
So they told me...
That'd be an easy way to get rid of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They are currently undergoing forward which are proceeding, so they are not available to sell.
But let me ask you this, we sold that last year, remember, that building sold, what, when were the airliners in?
Uh, we cleared map, we've gotten done with all our cases, cleared map, that, these are new.
Those are new?
Been seasoned, you can't...
Okay, okay. Okay, well, anyway, so, yeah, it's still, it's still being talked about, so I don't know, we kind of screen off for the time, just to, till we get the airliners moving.
Right, it's really just a question of whether it's worth selling.
There's no, there's no practical, uh, uh, uses for that, for the time.
Oh, we'll, oh, we'll continue to use it for storage for, see, it's airliners, and, and, and lessen until, of course, has to sell it.
Do you have some questions?
That's the only place you really have...
There's only place you have?
Yeah. There's like, rest in it, too.
Now, is it, would it be more feasible for us to construct the, uh, the city?
So glad you asked.
Plenty of getting from the bill, probably, put up.
Scott, since this is an agenda item, should we be talking about it in this?
The question is, would we add it as an item, I, yeah, I think probably we've reached an end of what we can, probably, that's right.
Okay. Okay, nothing else? Anything else we ought to...